It's been a minute since we talked last. We're, we're not talking about the legislature today. That feels kind of strange. Um, what are we going to talk about today, Hannah?
We're going to talk about school boards and why they're important and what they do, and why you should pay attention when there's a school board election happening because you need to hold some people accountable sometimes.
School boards, yes. Um, I live in Fayetteville. There is a school board election happening here. There is a school board election happening in West Memphis, and then there's one kind of smack dab in the middle of the state in Conway that maybe some people have heard about. But yes, we're going to talk about, um, why it's important to, to vote in school boards and to pay attention and to know who your candidates are that are running for those positions. And the great news is you don't have to have a kid in school and you don't even have to have a kid to vote in a school board election. So yeah, let's talk about it. Uh, why do you think it's important, Hannah, for, for folks to be involved?
Well firstly, just, you know, pretty simple, simple education quality. We want to make sure that all of the children within our school districts are getting high-quality education that puts them on a path for success in the future.
Yeah, I like that, um, former state Senator Joyce Elliott, she always called it a, a world-class education. That, I mean, education, public education's the great equalizer and we have an opportunity to really set all of our kids up on a level playing field. And it's really important that we, that we have, you know, proper representation to ensure that educational quality. And I think that's another point is that we, it really ensures that we have proper community representation. When, when more people vote, we ensure that that elected body represents our community better than when fewer of us vote. So it's really important that you lend your voice to that conversation and that you, you know, get a feel for who's running and ask them questions about, you know, how they, how they would do things with the budget or with curriculum. And, um, now to be clear, there are nonpartisan races and that's, that's by design. Um, and we like that. We don't, we don't want to politicize school board races. Um, but I think it's a great opportunity to talk with people about, you know, how they'll address budget issues. I think that's the, one of the primary functions of a school board is they, they're like the budget folks who determine, you know, how everything in your school district gets funded from like your facilities and your gymnasiums down to like, you know, what is in each classroom, um, that students have to use as tools to learn. So, um, yeah, it's, I think that's really important is that your school board can be as representative of your district as possible. That's a biggie for me.
Yeah, absolutely. And, um, kind of on the same notion of what I said first, but equity and access to, um, that's another aspect of the school board. And if you care about those things, that's why you should care about these elections. Um, also local control. Um, we talk about that a lot. And school board is a great example of how like you can control things within your own community. And when you do vote in these elections, you have the option of picking someone who would represent your values at that local level that you might not be seeing at a state level.
Yeah. And I, I like that mostly, I don't know, I just feel like it's so easy to get to know your school board members. Like a lot of times there are people who have previously been involved in your schools, either they're, you know, retired educators or their parents of, of kids who had attended the same district. Um, but you know, my school board here, like I bump into those people at the grocery store. And so it's super easy to have conversations. They're always responding to my emails when I ask dumb things or need to know something. So it's like the most local, it just feels like the most local. And also like what's more personal and family oriented than like your kid's school? So getting to know those people and having it really be an accurate, uh, picture of like your local community, um, and your local school district, I think is, is, it's just like an opportunity. It's an opportunity to get like good decent people in there who care about the issues that are going to impact your school in particular.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's Arkansas, we're a rural state and a lot of these, um, small-town schools, which we talked about during learns, like these schools are, are like the center of the community within these, these small towns and these areas. And so when you don't have people elected in those positions who have your best interest at heart, it, it really affects the kids the most. Um, and then it just kind of trickles out to the rest of the community as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And this is what has been so interesting for me about kind of the re, not really even a restructuring, but like a, a whole new take on school board elections is like, just, just a quick little primer of, of how it's changed in, in really the last three years. Like when we had, when COVID came and schools shut down, um, there was like a group of parents, I don't know what state it started in. I, I want to say like Florida or North Carolina.
Probably Florida.
Probably Florida. Uh, I'll double check that, a follow-up. Um, but you know, it was a group of parents and, and, and they like vehemently did not want schools to shut down. They like wanted their kids to still be able to go to school during the height of the lockdown. And then like when schools got started back up again, they were the ones who were like, absolutely over my dead body. Are you going to make my kid wear a mask? And then that kind of bled into like the anti-vax movement once we had vaccines. And so it was kind of like tapping in, it, it really was like national conservative extremists, like realizing the potential to kind of harness this parental, like deep frustration and anger at the local level. And then like connect the dot for them, connect the dots between like that hyper frustration with these big national culture war issues. And they like, were really good at wrangling these moms, um, literally moms. And like, that was how, that, that was how, you know, Moms for Liberty, this one group in particular, that is kind of at the heart of a lot of these extremists, really localized school board races. That's how they got their start was like COVID and open up the schools, no masking, no vaxing. And like now it's become this full-blown national organized movement of like these chapters in counties and different states of like moms who are like, wah, parental empowerment and like, you, parents know best. And it's like, well, all of those values were already true at the school board level. And school boards had been like, the races had been really pretty bland for such a long time. Like there's nothing like pretty much less exciting than a school board race. Like, okay, like can you do a budget and a matrix? And okay, let's talk about facilities and like hiring standards. Um, those are really the issues that school board members deal with on a regular basis. Like I feel like they're just always like writing budgets and, and like allocating funds. Um, like maybe your community is growing fast and you've got to think about building another school or, you know, maybe there's every now and then a super hot button topic, but, or like, what are we going to change our mascot to?
Yeah.
But it's like not actual, like the really national, um, you know, hot-button culture war issues are not the issues impacting regular schools on a regular basis. Like, again, they're really specific to those communities. They're really specific to the towns and the districts that they're in. And so there's this disconnect now, I feel like with groups that are really organizing around school board races and the agenda that they're pushing, because it doesn't really line up with what those elections should be, you know, what those candidates should be talking about in those elections, or maybe what those voters should be thinking about when they go to the polls. Do you have thoughts on that?
I agree with everything that you said. I also have a footnote.
Oh, a footnote?
A footnote. Um, Moms for Liberty was co-founded January 1st, 2021 in Florida.
New one.
I am a former school board member.
Mm-hmm. Checks out, checks out, checks out.
Former.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Anyway.
Well.
I was really focused on finding that.
I'm so glad you did. I don't know why. I thought, I think my brain went to North Carolina because I know that that was like a big part of the changing state legislative dynamics and the governor's race and all the stuff that recently happened in North Carolina. And like Moms for Liberty played a big part in that. And like the school issues played a really big part in that. Um, so yeah, it's just kind of strange to see it change so quickly and for us to kind of be living in this new version of a school board race. Um, but I do want to talk about why, kind of going back to what we talked about initially, like why hyper partisan localized elections, especially school board elections are not good for our community. Um, we saw some bills that were proposed in the state legislature this session that were going to like require partisan races at, at the school board level. Um, you know, they've been trying to do that with judicial races in the past. And so yeah, it's, it's not super healthy for, for our local communities. Um, one, it stokes a lot of fear and again, like inflames those culture war issues. And all of that is ultimately going to divide local communities instead of unite communities around solving problems for our local issues at the district level. Um, and I just think about like, okay, what does your hometown really need? And what do your kids in your hometown really need? Like, I don't think our kids need us to ban books and to pass a bunch of random hateful LGBTQ legislation that's going to harm those people in that community. Like they, they need us to think about things like lunch programs and like, does everyone have equitable access to technology? And what do you do if, you know, students don't have broadband access? And like, is your school fully staffed? And what are we going to do when we have too many kids and we have to build a new building? I mean, like, these are practical things. It's not these big picture national issues, right?
Yeah. Right. Uh, 100%. Um, and you know, when we do, when we take it to a partisan level at, when we're talking about local communities, um, it really starts to like eat away at transparency and accountability as well, uh, which we've seen a lot of that in the Conway School District since 2022, which was, um, the last election cycle, which is when all of these Moms for Liberty candidates were elected. And, um, I mean, we can, we'll, we'll talk about, we'll get more into it in just a second about like all of the things that have gone wrong in the Conway School District since then. Um, but like transparency and accountability are at the top. And it's always disappointing to see your elected officials not respect, um, I mean, it's like they're, they're not respecting their position, right? Like they're, they're not keeping you informed. They're not doing that aspect of their job. And, um, yeah, I mean, that's what we're seeing right now in Conway. It's crazy.
Yeah, it's, it's wild. I mean, I think another harmful part of it is like, I don't know. It, it's really, uh, nobody wants to be duped or like, I don't know, like hyped up into this kind of hysteria over these things, like, and be used as a political, as a political tool or as like a political pawn. Um, and I don't mean to say that like voters at the local level, that they're like not paying attention or they're, or they're like being manipulated. But in some way, it feels like that when we focus so much on these, these national issues that are driven by, um, an extremist agenda coming from outside our state and like telling us that these are the things we need to focus on, when we know those are not the things that are impacting our schools or our state. So like these, you know, anti-CRT policies and these, you know, anti-trans policies, it's like they're not, they're, you know, you've heard us say before, they're, um, solutions in search of a problem. They're not actually problems. So even if you may be values aligned with those things, they're kind of moot policies. And like, do you really want your lawmakers spending their time and energy? And in this case, like volunteer hours, um, getting through, like prioritizing that at their, for their school board agendas and like focusing on that rather than addressing like actual things. I mean, really, it's kind of what it has turned into in our state is a microcosm of what happens at the state legislature, which is like, we're going to spend so much time trying to score political points for whatever reason. Um, and then the result of that is like, none of these actual problems are going to get addressed and we're not going to see any practical solutions to them, which is really unfortunate because you can really be effective at the school board level. Like you can band together and do a lot of good in a small amount of time. Um, if, if they would, if they would do that.
Right, right. And I, I think, um, and I don't know in which way this started, but Mary Bentley being in that same area, definitely, um, I don't know if she started the fire, but she's keeping it going. Um, I mean, I know that she did a lot, um, in the, the session prior to this last one. Um, and then the election happened and then we started seeing the stuff in Conway. Uh, but yeah, I mean, she definitely, we saw all of the stuff happen over the summer in Conway and she brought all of that with her to the, to the floor. Um, so I don't know. I mean, you could say that Conway might be like a little experiment on their end. And I, I don't know, I don't like how that sounds, but.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't doubt that one bit. Um, yeah. I mean, the extremism too, it just, you know, it creates this divisiveness within our communities and it, you know, distracts us from the real problems. And it also is just like a, it, it distracts us from accountability and transparency too. Cause I think like, and this is what I've observed in, in Conway from afar, to be clear, like I don't live in Conway. Um, but what I've seen from, from my post, um, is that, you know, I think maybe these school board members got caught up in this culture war stuff. And then parents were like, no, thank you. Please, please do your jobs instead. Please help our kids. Please address academic performance and, you know, hiring and teacher pay and all these other things. Um, we're not interested in this hateful policy that targets particular groups or communities or individuals. So no, thank you. And like, they just, uh, I mean, I'm sure there's a sensitivity to being critiqued as a elected leader, but like they really like doubled down and then they were like backed into this corner. And then instead of being like, okay, maybe we'll do those things that they're saying, they were like, well, you just, we just don't care what you think. So now we're going to limit.
Meeting adjourned.
Meetings. And we're gonna, like, we're a public, we're a public board, but we're not going to be so public. And like, all of that is so problematic. One, it's like unethical and probably unlawful in a lot of circumstances with our FOI laws. Um, and yeah, they were like, you can't come into the school board meeting. We're going to limit how many people can be in here. You, you have to like be quiet. You can't, like, they were like bullying journalists. Like there's this like woman at the Arkansas Times who does great reporting. She was just like asking questions and then they like attacked her, um, in other media and like online. And I mean, that just, again, with it being so local, that just looks so bad because it's people you know, like it's people you know, and you're like, I thought I knew that person and they've really gone off the deep end. Um,
Well, on that note, let, let's just really quickly, we have like a bullet list of, of all of the things, um, probably missed a few of the things, but you know, we, we have.
An exhaustive list of, of bad things.
Right. Um, so illegally meeting outside of the public's eye, which is a big no-no. Um, misusing public funds, uh, to the tune of over $10,000 to attend some kind of conference in Texas. Um,
Cool.
Yeah, do with that as you will. Uh, you know, we've kind of mentioned this, but implementing anti-trans policies that put kids in more danger statistically, adjourning meetings, uh, public meetings because they didn't want to hear criticism. And I, they did that following, um, the $10,000, like it came out, someone like added up all of the, the expenses. And then they were like, we don't want to talk to you. Goodbye. Purposely, which you just kind of mentioned this, but purposely choosing small spaces to attempt to keep the public and the media out. Um, they were the first, uh, school board in Arkansas to start banning books. Um, they banned public speakers at one point, which is baffling. Um, they attempted to dock teachers' pay if they were accused of teaching certain divisive concepts, otherwise known as, uh, critical race theory. Um, there's some stuff about them deleting emails that they shouldn't be deleting. And they complain a lot about FOIA laws, to the point where Mary Bentley brought several, or at least a couple FOIA bills to the state legislature in an attempt to, um, make these, you know.
Ease their burden to disclose.
Ease their burden.
Documents.
Make it, uh, easier for them to not be transparent. Thankfully it didn't pass, but anywho, this is where we're at. Um, and I'm sure there's more, but that is our list.
Yeah, that's a gross list. I will add to this list that, um, and we have this, it's as a newish piece on, on our watch, but during one of these contentious November 2022 school board meetings, um, there were some, some college students who attended college at UCA in Conway who, uh, like rallied and organized to attend one of these meetings to support trans students and queer students and to say like, this has no place in Conway schools. And they were denied. Um, well, they were, they entered the school board meeting, I think probably one of these smaller locations and were like, there wasn't seating. So they were standing and then they were asked, asked to leave to go to the lobby because you could only be in the room if there was seating. Um, which is just silly. That's just not a thing. Uh, like a fire code is one thing, but like I've been plenty of rooms where there's been standing room only. And that's literally why it's called standing. There are people who are standing up who don't have a seat. Um, and so they were told to go into the lobby and like they, at one point started chanting, um, you know, something like trans lives matter or something like that, or protect trans lives. Um, and they were arrested. Like, I don't, I don't know the details, but I remember hearing about this when it happened, that like some students got arrested. I think Hannah, you told me that. And then it was just kind of like, it went away and nobody, it didn't, it didn't go away for them, but it went away from public eye. And then it came out just this week, at the beginning of the week, um, there's like a Substack independent journalist who released this guy's story. And like, he was arrested, it's a misdemeanor fine, which is like, you know, failure to disperse and whatever, um, in, in a public setting. And typically they, they, they may give you a fine and then they send you on your way. Well, they clearly wanted to make an example out of him. And he got put before a judge who's a former Republican Party executive director, term judge who, um, district judge, which is an elected position, who also ran for Supreme Court and lost. But during that race, this judge, um, was like blatantly partisan and used a lot of partisan rhetoric at a non-partisan race. There were some accusations, um, that, you know, he was maybe breaking campaign finance law because of that. Um, anyway, he lost his race and he's still on this, um, you know, sits in the seat in this district court. And he, he put this kid in jail for 10 days and fined him. And the other two, the other two people who were there who also got arrested just had to pay a fine. And so it, it just, it's just such a gross abuse of power. And like, the fact that it like exists at the school board level, and then it's like being reinforced, if not, you know, like even more concerted of abuse of power, like from the judicial branch. And I think that's what is so upsetting. I mean, there are so many things about this that are upsetting, but for me, from like the abuse of power standpoint, it's like, we have talked extensively at, for our people about how the judicial branch has been like the saving grace of a lot of these really terrible policies that our state government has passed and provides one of the only stable checks on the legislature and the executive branch, because those are now weirdly commingled. Um, and so it just was really upsetting to see a judge make a political move, use, use the judicial, the power of, um, you know, his office as a judge to make a political statement by punishing this kid. To me, like, again, it's just reinforcing that, that agenda and not upholding justice. It's, it's so, it's so appalling. Um, so if you haven't read that, you can go read our article. There's also like a, a pretty long thread, um, that the author posted on Twitter, um, where you can get into all the details. But like, that is, that's what's happening in Conway right now. And it's, it's really bad.
Where do we go from here?
Well, I will say that that's why it matters that we vote. Like, that's why it matters. Like, if you think that kids shouldn't be thrown in jail for just like showing up to a school board meeting to stand up for trans kids, you should vote in your school board election. Like, if you think that school boards should have equal representation for the, the people, especially the kids that live in a district, you should vote in a school board meeting. Like, do you care that your school board members are deleting emails and refusing to answer FOI requests and are like intentionally being disruptive and bullying journalists? Go vote, go vote in your school board election. Like, it's, if we keep them, like if we keep it unchecked, if we're, we're not holding them accountable at the ballot box, like that is the ultimate form of accountability. Like, and we have the power of, as voters to do that. And like, I know not everybody lives in Faulkner County or Conway School District, but, um, this is, this could, this could be replicated easily. I mean, we saw Bentonville School Board who recently had a race, like they, the Moms for Liberty folks had like a package, like a whole cohort, just by happenstance, like the entire, the entire board could have been turned over. I think there was only one person running for reelection. So there were four open seats and one current incumbent. But like, I mean, that's, that's wild to think that you could get like a whole, just like copy and paste law, like all five of these people are going to carry out an extremist agenda. How is that representative of a Bentonville School District? It's not, it's not. Um, so that's why it matters is because like, if we don't, if we become less and less engaged or think like this is less and less applicable to my life, suddenly we're going to wake up and we're going to feel like it happened overnight, but it really didn't. Um, but these, these folks who really have bad intentions and don't really care about local issues and accountability and transparency and good governance and representative democracy, like they're not, those, those people are going to be in power and they're going to be shaping our schools for years to come. And that's terrifying. And I don't want to like scare anybody, but also you should be scared and go vote.
Right, right.
Call your friends and family in Faulkner County, please, and ask them if they voted. And like, yeah, again, it's like super easy to like, reach out to these school board candidates. Um, not everybody's on Facebook, but I feel like that's like where the campaigns live in the virtual space, probably because it's all like middle-aged folks like me, who are like geriatric millennials. We're like, we love Facebook. Ah, um, like that's where you'll probably be able to interact with school board mem, school board candidates and members. Um, yeah. And I think like, ask all the questions, ask the really hard questions. And if they don't ask, answer them, you just keep asking them. And don't let non-answers be an answer. Like, that's just, it's just not, it's not a thing. For example, um, in my, in my town, there is, um, there's an incumbent running for reelection and then a person trying to unseat the incumbent. And the, my local Moms for Liberty chapter has like pseudo endorsed the challenger. Um, and so then there have been concerned parents and voters in, in Fayetteville ask like, are you, are you part of Moms for Liberty? Like, are you going to, uh, advance their agenda? And the challenger has given these very vague, like very vague diplomatic responses. I mean, they're so vague. They, they're basically meaningless. It's like, we, we all should be looking out for ways to work with everybody and kindness. And it's like one of those encouragement posters that you see from like the nineties. Um, and to me, that was enough to inform, well, I already knew how I was going to vote, but like, that was enough to inform me or to be able to say, like, if I didn't know anything else about either candidate, the dodginess speaks for itself. Um, like, like someone should have a very simple, easy to communicate platform. And if they don't at the local level, like where it's, where you only really do like four things.
Yeah. I mean, school boards honestly should, shouldn't be out here passing policies that have to do with, with all of this stuff. Anyway, like you said earlier, it's mostly budget, allocating funds, you know, all of those things or dealing with someone getting fired. I don't, you know, it's like where, um, I think you said this earlier, but they're just trying to like become the state, like the state legislature, like they're trying to become their own mini little like. Like they're trying to become their own mini little like gross power hungry cell. Um,
Yeah. And honestly, that's a, that's something I forgot to mention earlier is like the intention of Moms for Liberty overall and like some of these other groups that do this at the school board level, like they very clearly have a goal to like hack out these elected positions with their people. And then they use those as stepping stones to hire office. So like, it's, it's like, okay, we're going to get in with school board and then we're going to bump up to the what, forum court or city council? And then we're going to go to state ledge. And then we're just going to like permeate, you know, our entire state or nation with the policy we think is right. And like,
Honestly, truly just from like a strategic standpoint, brilliant, like.
I know. I know because man, you start talking about kids and schools and parental empowerment and like all of that sounds really great. Like, yeah, nobody should be able to tell my kids what to do. It's like, I should be the one who decide. And like newsflash, you, parents, you already are. Like, you already can opt out of so many of these things and you can already complain about books that you find obscene. Like those things, those pathways already exist. This is just to get you riled up. Um, and to use you as a chess piece on the board, which is unfortunate. Like, yeah, I, it'd be cool if like, there were five people on my school board who all thought just like me, but also that would be uncool. Like, what, that, that's just bad democracy. Like, that's just bad, non-representative democracy when you have five people who think the same way. Um, so that's why it matters if you vote. And Election Day is on Tuesday for these school board races. We mentioned West Memphis. Conway has two seats open. They have an at-large position.
Um, zone five.
At large, zone five.
Yeah. And at large is, um, her, the incumbent's name is Jennifer Cunningham. And, um, the incumbent for zone five is Bill Milburn.
And I will say that anyone who lives in the district can, um, vote for, in that at-large race. And then folks who live in zone five will vote for zone five and I believe at large. And so they'll have two twi, like two separate positions on their, um, on their ballot. And zone five is like, kind of like southern hot south, eastern Conway. Uh, I always think Conway is like directly north, southeast, west, and it's not. It's like kind of out of like angle. Um, but like, if you're, if you're driving to Conway from Little Rock, that like first chunk, not to be Little Rock centric. Uh, or if you're driving from north, west Arkansas or west on I forty going, going east, um, wow, do I know directions? I don't know. Uh, whatever. It's the bottom part. Um, and you should be able to just go to the Faulkner County Clerk's website. If you just Google Faulkner County, um, clerk. Like you'll have, every county is different. So we don't know like where things live on every county's website, but you should be able to like check where you live. If you're not sure which school board you're in, but for sure, if you live in Conway School District, you can vote for that at-large position. So go vote.
And I believe you can find, um, like a mock-up of your ballot on the Secretary of State's website.
They have to provide that now.
Yeah, it was.
Mm hmm. See, yeah, it's public, public service. Um, also, school board races have historically low turnout, like, yeah, I get it. Like if you're like twenty-three and you know, you're just like out there living your life, you're like, why am I going to go vote in this school board race? But it matters. It matters. Your voice matters. Your vote matters. Um, and these issues matter. And this is one way that we can keep a lot of these harmful policies at bay by voting. Anything else you want to add?
No, I don't think so. Um, I mean, we, we've said it so many times, but local elections are so important. And I hope that if you take anything from this conversation that we've had today, it's that, um, you know, you should really pay attention to those local races. Because I think those are really the ones that are going to impact you the most. Um, you just don't realize it.
That's right. Yeah. And you feel, uh, in my opinion, you feel like super empowered when you vote at the local level. Also because there, you know, there's, there's low turnout and you're like.
Yeah, there's going to be low turnout. You could literally be like that one vote that makes the difference, no matter which candidate you're voting for. It's crazy, but it's real. Like, you know, it happens all the time.
Yeah. There's a Curb Your Enthusiasm episode where Larry David is like walking in and he sees like a line and he doesn't want to vote because he doesn't want to wait in the line. And this woman's walking out and he asks her, I don't know, basically he asked her how they voted. He was like, well, I was going to vote the opposite. So like, we cancel each other out. Uh, or somebody walking in and like, he was like, cool, I don't have to go vote because like this person's not going to go to vote. I'm not going to go vote. We don't have to stand in line. We're done. We cancel each other out. But that person like went and voted anyway. And then he's at the like after party where the candidate, where they're getting all the, all the votes in and he, the guy lost by one vote. Uh, and he's like, ugh.
That's a true story. I mean, like, you know.
Yeah, we like lived in that. We, that happens in Arkansas like every.
All the time.
Uh, so don't be the Larry David.
Yeah, go vote.
I think too, um, I would love to hear if we have people who watch this and they're like, I voted. You can tell us. We'll pat you on the back on social media or whatever, um, give you a gold star. And then I think we're going to like wade into some other issues, not necessarily electoral issues like elections, but, um, maybe talk about healthcare in the coming weeks and Medicaid. There's a lot going on there. If you are, um, a Medicaid recipient, you should go make sure that your eligibility is up to date. Um, and other things that are pertinent to our lives. So thanks for joining us.
Thanks, friends. Uh, we'll see you later.
Bye. Thank you for watching and or listening. Again, we are For AR People and we're here to connect the dots for everyday Arkansans so that they can see how policy affects their everyday lives. Head over to our website, forarppeople.org to sign up for our newsletter. You can subscribe to our YouTube channel or our podcast. Thanks again. See you next time.